Can we just do a head count?
Oh, okay.
So she can.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, with us tonight, um, let's start to my right is, uh, um, we have Jim Walsh, we have Connie Shea with us, we have, uh, Ellen Sidillo, Bruce Mackey, myself, we have Kevin Robinson, and we have Richard Dion with us. So tonight, uh, we do not have John, John Gasky has not arrived yet. All right. Okay, so, um, so we have a change of lot held by, uh, by planning from Lot Eight to Lot Ten. So I see that Jack is with us tonight. If you want to.
Good evening.
Just guess this.
Yes, um, I could never figure out which lot people like best. I've got customers that like Lot Eight. So what I'd like to try and do is, uh, the board is holding Lot Eights and Lot Seven for surety under the covenant. I'd like to exchange Lot Eight for Lot Ten.
Okay.
Um, we have completed a number of the, uh, issues that Fasen O'Neil raised in their memorandum. Um, and some of them are, uh, the grass swales, the riprap around the, uh, outlet pipe with the flat end. Um, we did not complete the, uh, the perimeter, um, excuse me, I gotta get my glasses. The perimeter erosion and sediment, we have not completed that. Uh, the catch basins have been cleaned out on Number Four, uh, and the silt sacks have been installed. Um, Number Five, we've completed the, uh, deep sump manholes. And the gas traps have been installed. Uh, Number Seven, I guess that's not applicable. We have not installed the shrubs across the street yet, and we have tested, pressure tested the water line in that past.
Now, is that truck gonna remain there forever?
I'm sorry?
Is that truck guard gonna remain there forever?
Uh, no, we get rid of that. And as soon as they get rid of it, someone dump more trash down.
I know.
So.
No shame.
So, Mr. Chair, just for record, I.
Yeah, please.
I don't know if you've seen it, but I included a packet in, in your packets there. Those are going up tonight.
Oh.
All right, so we will hold in two lots, right?
That's correct.
All right, and so you want... So on this, uh, along with what you've completed, you said we are requesting that Lot Eight be released?
That's correct, in exchange for Lot Ten.
Oh, just for an exchange for Lot Ten?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we're not.
I'm not, no, I'm not trying to get release surety.
Total release, yeah.
Right, I just wanna switch the lots.
Yeah, but I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
But I think Jim might want to speak about that, I talked to him today about it.
Yeah, so, still working on, uh, have to, what I have to do is work with the attorney just to, you know, 'cause if, if, in our packets, there's, um, you know, the previous lot release, and that's been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, um, so we need to, I need to talk to our attorney how we get it so that we release, we release Lot Eight, but we get Lot Ten back, you know, and have the proper legal paperwork to do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
And, uh, so if the, you know, board goes ahead and approves it, then, um, then I can work on getting the paperwork.
Okay.
Strained out for that.
Great.
So while entertain a motion, so are there any other questions by any of the board members before we?
My, my question is, why do you want to swap the lots?
Someone likes Lot Eight better than they do Lot Ten, and, and I can't sell it if it's being held by the town.
Do we have a?
A buyer, one of the buyers to build the house on.
Do we have any sort of map of the proposed lots?
I didn't bring anything, I'm sorry, no.
Mr. Chip.
Yep.
Bring me up to speed, I've, I've missed the last couple of meetings due to sickness, but, um, do you have any, um, lots built on yet?
No, we have not.
Okay, so this would be the very first lot that you're building on?
Yes.
Now, my second question is, are you gonna build them spec as buyers buy them, or are you going to try to, um, are you gonna build them spec, or, um, are people gonna have to come in and, um, buy it, purchase it, and have you build it?
We'll probably put up one spec, but we're trying to pre-sell as many as we can.
Okay. That's wise.
Well, it's, yeah.
That's a wise way to do it. And you're not, and you're not gonna end up stuck with them.
Yeah.
Is there any significant difference in the topology or layout of Lot?
Lot, Lot Eight is three acre lot, Lot Ten is probably a one acre lot, and that's the biggest difference.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, is there any chance that we could, um, at least for myself, Connie brings up a good point, is there any chance that I could look at the topography of the difference between the two of them, just, just to look at it?
Yeah, I.
Anything like that?
I don't have a, I don't have, I didn't bring this lens.
Have to run downstairs and see what we got, take me a minute.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, is there another problem?
No, that, that's fine, if Jim wants to do that. Um, but, uh, I mean, the, the thing we hold, we held two lots.
Yes.
And it was because it was a certain amount of money.
That's.
For those two, and, and that money, we, the town holds those two lots, uh, so that if, so that the road can be completed, that's the reason that we do that. And once the road is completed, then we release the lots, that's, that's what we've been doing over the years.
Is that considered a part of bond?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, so that in case, uh, all of a sudden, Jack can't complete the subdivision, and, uh, there are two or three houses built in the subdivision so that they won't have an incomplete road, the town can sell those two lots to complete the road so the people can access their homes. That's the purpose of why we held those two lots, okay? We got a, we get an estimate from the, our consulting engineers on how much the road would cost, and then we took the two, and then, uh, we kept the value of the lots, and so that that would cover that cost. So that's, that's how we do that, or that's what we've been doing over the years. So is the value of, uh, each one of those lots, is the value of Lot Ten?
That was my other question, Mr. Chip.
Yeah, I mean, that's the most important thing, yeah.
What is the difference in the value between Lot Eight and Lot Ten?
Well, I think Lot Ten, Lot Eight was probably the premium lot in there, that's kind of why I was holding it to the end, but it's probably worth, um, probably a hundred and seventy thousand, where Lot Ten is probably worth a hundred and fifty thousand. You have about, about over three hundred thousand in surety between two lots.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, are they just about the same size?
No, Lot Eight is three acres, Lot Ten is probably an acre.
Wow, that's a big difference according to this map. I wouldn't see that much difference. Okay, so Lot Eight is three acres, so we're looking at Lot Ten is almost two acres bigger than Lot Eight? No.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
Lot Ten is bigger.
It must be at least an acre and a third, right, the minimum?
No, this is a conservation subdivision.
Oh, right, right, right.
So they're probably.
Like I said, I need to get up to speed up.
That's fine.
For a couple.
Yeah.
Couple meetings, okay.
And the paving, pavement is done on the road.
Okay, so a large portion of the road is done?
Well, most of the roadway is done. We have, we have, uh, the binder, uh, the, the finish coat is to go down, and the sidewalk to go in.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Is, can change the value of our bond or is it significant?
Well, the thing is, is we, we held those two lots, so Jack's saying.
Is it based on the whole property opposed to each individual lots?
Well, it was, the two lots we were holding for, to the completion of the road, more than half of the road is completed now, so, so probably, you know, one lot would cover it anyway, but we still have those two lots, so, um, so I don't really see any difference about swapping. We still have the two lots to, uh, to back up, yeah, so I don't see any problem with it.
Let's make sure I ask the.
Yep.
The valid questions that need to be asked.
Yep.
So there is a rough road in there with the sources already in and everything?
Oh, yeah, there, there's, pavement is down, berms are in there.
Drainage.
Drainage is in there.
Yeah.
It's got more than half the road done.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's substantially complete, we gotta put down the finish coat.
So I think the only problem with this is, is, uh, you were saying that, Jim, that, uh, about, uh, twisting these lots around.
Yeah, switching the paperwork.
From one lot to the other, yeah, just the paperwork.
Yeah.
So, um...
Yeah. Yeah, Lot, Lot Eight has got a long driveway.
Okay. Thank you, I'm not trying to make things difficult, you know, just wanted.
That's fine.
We got all our, our apples in the right basket. So you.
So I, I think, I think, yeah, I think, well, I think we can approve this, uh, lot change from Lot Eight to Lot Ten, uh, with the condition that, uh, Jim has to work this out with, um, the town law, yeah, with town council, um, uh, to do the paperwork on this.
So I will make a motion to accept Lot Ten as Lot Eight, um, the condition that Jim is gonna work with council to see how we will do that.
Yep.
I'll second that motion, yes.
Okay, so we have motion to second, further discussion, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, okay, so this, uh...
Who was the second?
That, that was.
That was.
Connie was the second.
Okay, Connie made the second.
And so, uh, Ellen, Mr. Shea, Bruce Mackey, and Kevin Robinson all voted yes.
Uh, zero noes.
Jim, uh, does she know that, um, he's not here?
Yeah, John, and John Gasky's not here, yeah.
Right, thank you.
And, uh, yeah, Richard can only, uh, I can't vote on this one, this particular one. All right, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, the next is, uh, the transfer of developmental rights, um, TDR discussion of the, of our next steps, and this is this discussion and possible vote on establishing a zoning bylaw review committee to consider implementing recommendations of the town master plan. And, um... So, I don't know, maybe, uh, I'll let Jim speak about this before I say anything.
Sure, so in your packet, I also dropped one off last week, there was a few extras that came in this week, but there's a list of all the applicants, uh, and the dates that they submitted their, uh, either email, or they appeared before me in the office. Um, you know, just so you know, we've set a deadline of, uh, last Thursday at noon time, so there were a few people who came in after that, I don't know if that matters to this group or not.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Jim, have, is it very clear that we, there are people, we are allowed to serve in two committees?
So this would be, um, so this would be a planning board subcommittee, and so we have, uh, at the last meeting, it was decided Bruce and Connie would serve on, on this committee, uh, on behalf of the planning board, uh, just as long as they don't get up to three, then you're back to being a planning board at that point. Then you have a planning board quorum.
Okay.
Have we reached out to Concom and Historical District?
I did reach out to Concom, uh, didn't hear any response back, uh, didn't reach out to Historical, but, um, you know, we, you know, we got a decent list, it was listed on the town's website, uh, so we got eight, eight responses, uh, from individuals in the community, uh, one of whom is Loring Tripp, who lives in Plymouth, so he would not be eligible to be on the committee, but we told him that if he's interested, you know, he could come and, you know, participate in the meetings, you know, I think, uh, we're gonna have, I think we probably should have some outsiders who could come in and speak to certain topics, to, you know, market conditions, those kind of things, environmental issues, uh, that would be helpful to this, to this committee.
And so, uh, Jim prepared a list of some of the bylaw review, um, agenda that we, uh, might be looking at, would, uh, one would be the excess, accessory dwelling units over commercial property, uh, one would be non-medical marijuana overlay district, uh, large ground, large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, uh, signs throughout town, and the floodplain district. And, um, see, review of the land use and zoning recommendations of the two thousand seventeen master plan, oh, it's been three years already, only seemed like that was like last year, so it'd be, uh, which would be the transfer of developmental rights, land use strategies, village district bylaws, and, um, that'd be village and village business, uh, conservation subdivision bylaw, land use strategy, and other, uh, bylaw changes would be stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw. So those are the things that the, the committee will be looking at, maybe some others as we go along. So we've had, between Mr. Shea and myself, which is two, we had seven other people, actually eight, um, apply, and I think, so it would give us, uh, a, a total of nine people, one has dropped out, one we spoke to was Loring Tripp, he's not a resident of Kava, but a very knowledgeable, uh, man about, uh, land use and land planning, and, um, so I think he might attend the meetings, uh, just to, uh, uh, but not as a member of the, uh, of the commission. So we have Fran Mello, uh, Jen Bogart, David Eldridge, Adam Clea, Sarah Hewens, Chuck Meredith, and Adam Holmes. So I guess, um, I do, do see some people out in the audience, I don't know if they're here to, here to talk about this, uh, um...
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Um, are we choosing one?
No.
Of the select board members opposed to both of them, or would it be all right in our bylaws if both of them?
Yeah, I think, I think we can have, yeah.
That would be Jen Bogart and Sarah Hewens.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, Jen Bogart was, uh, the official representative of, right, correct?
Right, she was appointed by the select board.
She was appointed, yeah.
Again, I'm just getting caught up to speed.
Yep.
Okay.
And then Sarah would be.
She's already on it, so we're looking to fill how many positions?
Well, we, 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 we haven't really done anything with this, we just asked that, uh, you know, people put their names in, and Jim has reached out to certain boards to, to see if anybody wanted to participate. So this is, and we decided that at this meeting here, we look at the list of people that, that we've, that have put applications in, or, or said that they would like to be on this.
One more question is, would it not be to the well of the town to just pick at least one person from each other?
Well, we had.
Representative?
Well, I, I think we, we asked, um, well, you know, we, we looked at other committees that, that have happened in town, and, uh, you know, they, some of them come from, uh, you know, just people in town that are on boards, and other people are on boards, so, um, we just, just put it out there, we advertised, um, and so we've gotten, uh, seven people plus the two planning board members. So I think that's, that's a good number of people, I think that's, that's good. I don't know if you would really want any more, it's, it's, it's good. Yeah, I think we can have all these people, yeah, I think so, yeah.
I, I do think it's important to have somebody from Concom and somebody from the Historical District on this for.
That was my.
Just for the reason that we're discussing the TDRs, and a big part of the TDRs is, uh, the importance of, uh, our water and the conservation and, um, historic district applications. Even if they don't want to be on, we should at least get some sort of notification or recommendations from them.
Oh, I think that would be part of what the committee would do, is that, you know, I, I look at this as that we have the main committee that's focused on that, and maybe there's a question that comes up, and then could invite, uh, someone from the Historic District Commission come in to talk about, um, what their concerns may or may not be, um, as well as, uh, you know, say Conservation Commission, well, Sarah has a long background with conservation, but, uh, we could invite, you know, uh, the, either the chair or, uh, Brooke Moro, the conservation agent, to come in and, uh, you know, talk to certain questions, um, you know, when you're talking about land development, you know, one of the concerns is gonna be about density, and so that's gonna lead to the, you know, questions about water supply and also septic system, so I, I could see having, you know, Kevin Fork or a member of the Board of Health come in to, uh, talk to those, um, issues. Uh, so, you know, this would be, this would be the main committee, but then we would also reach out to others, you know, for information. Um, so Loring Tripp, who's listed as number four here, um, you know, he works for a developer, you know, they, uh, they're currently developing South Meadow, they have a proposal for Silver Street, and, uh, and then he's also looking to work with some other, uh, property owners in town that own larger properties, um, and so it'd be beneficial to have kind of someone who could come in and talk to, you know, kind of some of the current market conditions, um, and market trends as to what's going on out there, uh, 'cause TDR is just not, um, housing, but it's also transferring commercial development rights as well, so, um...
So, Mr. Chair, if I could piggyback on, on Connie's, um, question, would it ultimately be just okay if we were to say, um, if we have to refer to somebody on Concom or the Water District Commission, that we, that the chairperson would be asked their opinion on it? Would something as simple as that?
Sure, we can ask them to come in, yeah, but I would like to see recommendations from each of these committees, 'cause they're the ones that deal with this in and out.
The fact that we need public on this.
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with you on the fact it would really be nice to see one person from every, um, board, but also in that sense, if we can't get somebody that's gonna come from every board, at least we could ask the chair if, when we have this kind of meeting, if they could, not necessarily have to be there, but maybe they could call a Zoom or whatever that's called, I don't know, these fucking things that go on as well to.
Right.
Still live under a rock, but, um, so...
I wasn't looking for every committee, I was just looking for the more, ones that are more crucial to identifying aquifer resources and, uh...
And exactly to your point, the, the ones that are very important in that, you know, it would be asked of them to, you know, consider, you know, not joining, but, you know, speaking on behalf of that position.
So, okay, Jim, yeah?
Just, and also to point out that, uh, Serpide, our regional planning agency, they'll also be working with us, and, um, under previous planning directors, they've done a lot of work, uh, when they were doing the South Coast Rail Project, they looked at, um, aquifers and, um, uh, uh, resource areas, endangered species, that kind of thing, where they created, um, what they call the, uh, uh, the primary development areas and the primary protection area, and so the, on some of the maps you see from Serpide, you can see those areas all mapped out. Those kind of are similar to, um, what was done in the, uh, original town master plan, uh, back in two thousand one, where they have the, uh, it was the Kava Action Plan, but we can still go through a process, we do outreach to each of the bodies to, you know, make comments on, uh, you know, various aspects of what we're trying to do and, and, you know, make it into a, a, a better bylaw, better mapping, you know, that type of thing.
Jim? All right, um, I, I do see some people out in the audience, and I do, I, I don't know if anybody wants to speak, any of the people that are on this list.
Well, they may not know, so, they wanna, just see if they're, I don't know if you wanna do a roll call of the people, just to see who's here.
If we're gonna add them all in as a.
Yeah, uh, let's see, I think Fran Mello's here?
Yeah.
Is there anything that you'd like to, uh, to say?
No, we, um, excuse me, I think we were invited in case the committee wanted to ask questions about.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the email that I got.
If we were gonna limit participation to three citizens, say, if we had board members, I would think that we would ask interview, interview process.
Okay, all right, well.
If we're gonna take them all, I think.
Yeah, I think we, I think we just take everybody, and, uh, um, I don't know if there's any questions that you would like to ask Fran, um...
I'm kind of new to this, so I'd like to know what your background is, Fran.
Fran, I hate to trouble you.
Yeah, if you could, maybe, yeah, sit up on the.
Oh, great.
In the chair and. You called the hot.
You can turn around and walk out.
So this is Fran Mello of.
Be held, held accountable.
Fran Mello of Thirty-Eight Meadow Street.
I've been a resident of Kava for fifteen years, um, yes, I am on a couple of other boards in town, but I think that the boards that I've served on, um, some of my expertise and some of what I've learned over the course of years will be helpful to this committee. I have been probably twelve years on community preservation, not as chairboard, but as a member at large, um, and I've been ten years with ZBA. I sat on the ZBA for eight years as an alternate, okay, going to the meetings, learning the bylaws, listening to what was going on in town, and what the committee legally could vote on, or not vote on, or how they made their decisions. So, you know, I, I think that shows a commitment to learning before I make a decision, and that's what I'm hoping to do on this board. I'm interested in seeing what Serpide has to say, um, I've been watching. I've been watching the meetings that have been going on, you know, remotely because I chose not to be here. And I just think it's a very important committee that will be setting the tone for the town for, for many years to come. And I, I'd be very privileged to sit on it and participate.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Any questions while we get her up here?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you. I know you might not know me from a whole lot, but I think that's fantastic. And actually, that's one of the things that I, I liked best about having served on this board before I was elected to it was the time that I volunteered to be in the position
Yep.
that, um, this fine gentleman is in and that way there, you know, like you said, you get to learn what's going on in the town. You get to know, you know, how each board works. And in your case, we would be bringing in pretty good teams. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All set?
Uh, everybody's all set? Yep, we'll, we'll be looking, we'll be trying to set a date, I think, for our first. I guess we'll talk about our, our meeting date when we go through the list here. But I see the next one was Jen Bogart. She's not here tonight. Is David Eldridge here tonight? So we, uh, we're going to put on the hot seat David Eldridge, 12 Meadow Street.
My name is David Eldridge. I've lived in Carver for 34 years. My family's been in Carver for generations. I have, again, I served on the Conservation Commission. I got a Bachelor's of Science in Biology. I have a law degree from UMass Law. Back then it was Southern New England. My office is in the center of town, um, with my family's land holdings. I've been involved with the town and the different boards for many years. And like I said, when I see something that interests me to get involved in, you know, I sign up and try to do that. I think that, you know, Carver's making a turn in whatever direction and I'd be part of it, so. It's really all I got to say.
All right. Well, thank you for applying and thank you for being here tonight. I don't know if anybody has any, any questions?
I think you'll add to that committee favorably. That's great.
I guess the only question I do have though is, a- a- and I do want to serve, um, today we got noticed like four hours before. So, uh, if we're going to have BEDs and stuff, can we somewhat have a schedule?
Oh, yeah.
Along with a professional life. I have four kids and a wife and grass that grows and streets that plow and, so it usually, so that's all I would ask for. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll try to, uh, uh, get that stuff out well ahead of time. Um, we got to try to figure out a time for meetings and, um, how many times a month, you know, well, how many times we want to meet and, so we'll, we'll work that out. But tonight was the first-
No, no, I completely understand. And I know, I mean, this is moving at a rapid speed, so I, I, I'm not attacking anything or anybody. I was just simply saying that, 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 uh-
Sure, no, I understand. You, you want to have a notice, so as I would too.
That's all.
All right, next, uh, we have on the list Adam Clear. Is he here tonight?
Yeah.
So Adam, we don't have a, we don't have your address.
Oh, I apologize. It's 37 Lakeview Street.
37 Lakeview, okay.
Good evening, everybody. How's it going? Uh, again, my name is Adam Clear. Uh, I've been a resident in town for about eight years now. Came here when my son was one. Thought it was a great place to raise him. Um, if any of you have any family in Cub Scouts or know any family in Cub Scouts, I'm their pack master. Um, actually, John Gasky's son is in my den, so I've known him for about two years now because his, he's been with us in the Scouts. Been having a great time doing that. I really like the town. Like I said, I'm kind of a newbie to town. It sounds like a lot of folks have been here for quite a while. Um, I've only been here for eight years. But really love the town and, you know, got involved with Scouts to kind of get involved a little bit more and I thought this might not be a bad way to be a little bit more involved in the town's progress and how it moves forward. Seemed like a good opportunity.
Well, thank you for, uh, for applying. Any questions?
It's like everybody adds a little something to this. It sounds great.
Well, that's, that's what you want in a committee, of different people from, uh, different, with different points of view, so that's good.
I do have a quick question. Have you worked with Buzz in the past in Cub Scouts or?
Worked with who?
What's his name? Buzz Adiano?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I know that at one point, uh, Buzz was part of, uh, the Cub Scouts and, uh-
I'd imagine I probably remember the name Buzz, so no, I don't think I've met him.
Actually, what was really nice is years ago he used to open his building, um, and allow them to build their rally sport cars for the, um-
Oh, the Pinewood Derby Cars?
Yes.
Oh, he's at, um, Remodelers.
Now you know him, right?
Yes, but yes, we did, yes. He does, and he still does that and he's amazing and his guys, you know, when we set up events and stuff for the Scouts, there's always that element of, okay, you know, like what do we have to think of that we haven't thought of? And I hadn't done the, the project at Remodelers before and I had an opportunity to work with him this past year on it. And I went in going like, gonna get here an hour early. I'm gonna have self-stuff up. I got, I got there an hour early. He had everything laid out for the Scouts. There was nothing those kids needed. It was great. He did everything for them.
So you've had a good experience with him too?
Yeah, he was terrific. He was a great guy. He was super helpful.
Well, thank you for your permission-
Yeah, thank you.
-and willingness to be part of this.
Yeah, it was the easiest quiz I had all week.
Myself, I, I didn't, uh, I didn't get involved until my children were, were, uh, adults because I didn't think it was right. And now, I, I'm like you, I just wanted to be part of it. Kind of now I wish it would have been part of this, what was going on in the town when they were growing up, but I'm glad that you're getting in when you're getting in.
Yeah, I thought it might be, might not be a bad idea if you're gonna, you got two choices. You can either stand back and complain about something or you can jump in and try and make a difference one way or the other, so.
That's great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next one was Sarah Hewens. She's not here tonight. Chuck Meredith. Chuck Meredith here. How about Adam Holmes? Yeah, we don't have a address for you either, not, not on my agenda anyway.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so I reside at 13 Redtail Lane. So I had originally heard about this committee, um, a month or so ago, a few weeks ago, and immediately piqued my interest. I worked professionally in the civil engineering and land surveying field for a number of years in a, in a prior life many, many years ago. Um, and as part of that experience, worked with different zoning board of appeals and planning boards, Concoms, et cetera, presented in front of all those boards and committees and then worked very closely on projects that involved all of them. And so I, I have some experience working in, in those fields and it, it was always an interest to me. Uh, I took some postgraduate study work in the, at a graduate program in, at Wentworth as well. Uh, studied real estate law and land surveying and things of that nature that, that I think would be relevant to the discussion anyway. But when I originally heard about the committee being formed, um, it, it piqued my interest because I have some experience working in the field, but also because, because of that experience in the field, I know that there's, um, typically when, when zoning bylaws are, um, implemented and, and changed, there's significant implications to those bylaws and a lot of times you don't realize it, um, at the onset, right? Something that you don't quite realize or see what the effect is going to be until five, 10 years down the road of a bylaw change. So I, I just think it's something that I'd like to be part of the discussion, uh, part of the conversation that takes place, um, as some of these things are reviewed and looked at and, and, because I think it is going to sort of steer us in a, in a certain direction. I know that was, uh, somewhat the catalyst behind it was that it was part of this master plan that was done and making sure that some of that master plan gets implemented. And so I think being part of that discussion is, is very, very important. It's why I wanted to be part of it. Uh, just, just some background on me. My wife and I both grew up here in town, uh, lived here all my life. Uh, moved away for a few years after college, but, um, moved back here about 11 years ago and now we're raising our, our three kids here. So we're, we're happy to be back in the community, be a part of the community. I currently serve on the Finance Committee in town as well, uh, but, but thought this would be a good way to share some of my experience and, and be a part of positive change.
Well, thank you for volunteering and being here tonight. Any questions?
I know he's an amazing person, so. I vouch for him any day.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask him quickly, if I'm not mistaken, you're also very, very involved in baseball, are you not?
Uh, I am actually, yes.
I think that was important too, that you're, you know, part of the community in the, in the sense that did you not actually organize it and run it? I'm, I'm Caleb Barson, also a grandfather.
Yeah, fantastic.
So I believe I, I've seen you from time to time. So I think that too is good. Is, you know, the dynamic of what the kids are doing, one of, one of the aspects of what the kids are doing in town.
Yeah, I've been, I've been serving on the, the, um, Carver Community Board of Directors for six years, president for the last four. I'm actually going to be transitioning out of that role. Still serve on the committee in a different role, um, or on the board in a different role. But I, I've been a part of youth sports since I moved back to town. It was such an important part of, um, who I became as a man, um, growing up here in town and the people that had a positive impact on my life through youth sports. So when my wife and I decided to move back here, that was one of the first things I wanted to do was get involved and, and be a part of that. So I, I've done it for quite some time and now I'm going to, I'm going to transition a little bit. I'm not going to wear the, the hat anymore, so to speak, uh, but I'll still be a part of the board and, and help out any way I can.
Well, thank you. I thought that was important for you to share as well because I do believe I saw you in that position.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Your anticipation and willingness to be in.
And my, my son's playing in Plymouth now in a-
Caleb is too.
And we're, so we're playing against Caleb in Bayberry, so, yeah.
I know, but he's still got that. He's too lazy to run the bases, but he wants to hit a home run.
Yeah, he, and he does, so. He's a good player, but. Is that it?
All right, thank you, yes.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I guess, uh, from here, now that we've, uh, spoken to all the members that, that came tonight or all the people that volunteered to be on the committee, um, and I want, uh, of course Jim Walsh, our planner, to be with us, uh, through all this too. And, uh, so, uh, we've, we've got to try to work out a time to, to schedule our first meeting and I was just wondering, you know, I spoke to you about how you were going to try to do that.
Yeah, so one thought was, you know, planning boards, you know, the second or fourth Tuesday, do we want to try to do something on the opposite Tuesdays? But there's one potential conflict is that select board usually meets on those dates, so, um, our members who are, uh, are potential members, as you say, who would be on the select board, uh, may have a conflict. But I don't know, I don't know if we want to do a poll just to see what-
Sure.
-time of day or days a week.
With a six to seven on the nights we meet work?
Are the planning board nights talking about? What do you think about that, Bruce?
Well, uh, that would be fine with me. Of course, I'm retired, so I don't have to show.
Right, right.
I don't have to go to work every day, but, uh, I know that people that do have to work, I don't know how early they could get in here. Um, I've been on, on other committees before and, um, sometimes we, we met at 5:30, 6 o'clock. But it all depends if, you know, people can make it or not.
Right.
Well, let's ask our newest-
Sure, yeah.
-separate committee people, what's your feelings or thoughts on the meeting time or?
I mean, I think if you've got work and kids and stuff at home somewhere a little later in the evening can be a little bit better. Um, you know, if you ask to come in, you know, 4:00 in the afternoon, it conflicts with a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, 6 o'clock would be nice. That way you could wrap up and still get home, you know, dinner with the kids before they go to bed and stuff like that. So that's usually what we try and nail the Cub Scout meetings to because that's how we found to work for a lot there.
And what nights do the Cub Scouts meet?
That varies by den.
Okay.
Usually we try, try and shoot everybody for Thursday nights, but again, it's a fluid situation depending on families and who's wearing, what sports are happening and, but Thursday nights are gentlemen scouts.
Mr. Eldridge?
So, yeah, yeah.
Your thoughts or?
I mean, whatever the group wants. I mean, but mainly Wednesdays and Fridays are high school sports, so I'm a team to play high school sports, so I kind of like to watch them play.
So here we go with, uh, so the planning board meets at 7:00. Um, so if we did it on a Tuesday night at 6:00, would that work with everybody?
It would work, but do you think 5:30 would be better just to give us a little bit more time or to give you guys a break between one meeting and the next meeting?
Actually, a question, how long do you think meetings might be?
Uh, we, I mean, I think we have, I think we just have to kind of focus on getting everything done within an hour timeframe.
Yeah.
They can be continued. We won't really be voting on-
To, uh, meet off, on the off Tuesday that the board doesn't meet?
Well, that's, the selectmen is the same.
Oh, same thing, aye.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, yeah, so, uh, so say 5:30, does that work for everybody on a Tuesday night?
Well, it would work for everybody.
Mr. Chair, I was just like, see, I'm kind of embarrassed. I don't want to be on this committee. It sounds like it's going to be the Hall of Justice Super, like the 1970s, you're going to have Spider-Man and Spider-Man on this thing. Sounds great.
You're welcome to attend. You're welcome to attend.
Just, just to remind everybody, we'll be open to the public. Anybody that wants to put in input or come and discuss with us, please, please come forward.
Yeah, the only thing that bothers me and which we try to do when we do our meetings here is large crowds under the COVID conditions, you know? Normally, large crowds don't bother me. I'm fine and, you know, uh, that's great. But, uh, so we'll have to see how that goes.
Yeah.
And by law, you can only have so many people in a, in a room anyway, uh, with the COVID. So we'll see how it goes. But, uh, yeah, I mean, the public is, uh, is, is welcome to come too. But we do have a, a good group, I think, an excellent group of, uh, of members. I'm kind of excited about all this. This is really good. So, um, we want to do it on planning board evenings, say at 5:30?
5:30, okay.
So it would be before the planning board. I, I've been on other committees in, while I was on the planning board and we did do it before the, the planning board meetings sometimes, so, uh, then that worked out pretty good. So if that's agreeable, we'll reach out to the other members, um, that are present.
Uh, when's our next?
Well, so, yeah, I have to work that out with Jim and he'll send out an email to everybody. Um, I don't, um, if you want to, before you leave tonight, um, there is a sign-in sheet and if you could write down your email address so Jim can send out emails.
So I think I have everyone's email address.
Okay, that's good.
So that, and then actually our next, so the next planning board meeting would be the 13th. So if we're doing on a planning board night at 5:30, right after Columbus Day, good way to start the week.
Okay, that's fine.
October 13th. So we'll, yes, we'll have to put an agenda together and then, um, make sure we reserve meeting time and notice to Area 58, um, so we can just-
And could I also ask if there's any information out there that we could read to get prepared? Or, you know, I guess TDR is probably the, the first focus.
Right. So, um, we have TDR materials that are posted to the planning board webpage. So if you pull up the page, it's the information on the right-hand side, um, so people could start looking at that. The, um, presentation that Serp did, that's posted on the website. So I would start with that information and then, um, I'll be talking to Serp to, uh, see what their availability is and see what we can do, um, for any additional materials.
But I, I-
Thank you.
I think you can send them all, uh, the rough agenda that, that you came up, so they have something to, to look at.
Right, well, things to note. So this sheet right here, what I can do, I can have this posted to the webpage so that people can just download it directly. So the, the first block of items at the top, those were all items that we had prepared for the, uh, this past year's annual town meeting. And so things got pushed back, so they had a, a streamlined town meeting, uh, back a few months ago. They were going to be on, uh, this fall's town meeting, uh, but there was not enough time, uh, because of the early elections, so, uh, we again, uh, Bruce offered to take, take it off, all these planning items off the agenda, uh, mainly so that, because we have new planning board members, that they would have an opportunity to review the changes we made to the bylaws. So that's why those are listed here. So it'd be an opportunity, you know, to, to take another look at the solar bylaws, uh, the accessory dwelling unit of a commercial that's going to be related to TDR because that, that, you can only do that with TDR. And so because we didn't have TDR available yet, we had a developer who was interested in pursuing that. So we made changes so that they had a mechanism to do something. Non-medical marijuana overlay district, so there were recommended changes to that. Uh, non-medical marijuana overlay district, so there were recommended changes to that. Um, uh, the large-scale ground mount to solar, there were a number of recommendations made to change that bylaw. Um, and then, uh, signs that were just minor changes to that, and then floodplain district, uh, the, uh, federal government, uh, they update their floodplain maps, uh, every so many years. Uh, there were some changes made, uh, we were supposed to have adopted it at, you know, Springtown meeting, but, um, uh, the, the case with that was that, uh, not, all the towns weren't able to meet the deadline that they needed to make, so they, the, the federal government, we, uh, they, uh, rescinded their documents so that give more time to the towns to do that. And then, uh, other items, we're just gonna look at, um, review land use and zoning recommendations of twenty-seventeen master plan. Um, I believe that's posted to the website, uh, so you may wanna check on that, uh, it'd be the twenty-seventeen master plan. But section twenty-seven hundred of the bylaw, uh, transferred development rights, so they make, uh, there are a number of recommendations that Serped made, um, to the town, and it's incorporated in the plan on, uh, doing some changes to the bylaw to make it more effective. Uh, but one of the things that was missing from previous bylaw adoptions was a TDR overlay map. So, uh, now that's gonna be, uh, looked at and adopted. And then, um, uh, they also made recommendations about the village district, um, zoning districts. Uh, the, the receiving areas designated in the plan, uh, are, are recommended to be put in the village district, so there might be some, uh, changes to the density and, and the types of uses, so, you know, this group will look at that and, and make decisions on that. And then also with the conservation subdivision bylaw, take a look at that, see if that's, um, needs any changes. And then, uh, one other thing that the town is mandated to do is, uh, we, the town does have a, uh, stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw, and that's required under the towns, the town, uh, I think it's sued the state and then the federal government, uh, there's a, uh, stormwater, uh, permit that the town has, so this year we have to update our stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw. So, uh, that's also on the menu, so, uh, what I'll do, I'll send this all out. Is that Bill over in the corner, I didn't recognize you at first, so Bill Napolitano from, uh, Serped is here as well.
I was trying to figure out who that was.
Couldn't think, it's the mascot.
He's our mystery person on the committee, yes.
Yeah, we'll, and we'll be here to help out, uh, Jim and I have conversations, we've, we've gone over some of this stuff, so, yeah. Whatever, we'll help you out with anything, I've been in your district, I'm your regional environmental planner, I've been here for thirty-four years. So I've been through every planning iteration in the town of Carver with a bunch of folks.
No, we, uh, we thank you, uh, for, for helping us out, and, uh, you know, you've, you've had a couple of years' experience, that's for sure.
Great committee, I'm, I'm really impressed with the people who've signed up to help out the town, it's a really good and diverse committee, so.
Yep.
We should have some fun with it too.
Yep, I'm very pleased. All right, anything else, Jim?
Uh, that's it regarding this.
Okay.
Now, was the board gonna vote? So what happens here is that the board is not really appointing the members, cause that's, uh, under the, uh, town bylaws, uh, the town administrators, the appointing authority. So I think, um, did the, did you wanna have a vote to recommend these folks as, um, appointees? To, to be appointed by the town administrator?
Yes, okay, let's do that, so, um, I'd entertain a motion, uh, to recommend, uh, Fran Mello, Jen Bogot, David Eldridge, uh, Adam Clear, Sarah Hewens, Chuck Meredith, Adam Holmes, Bruce Mackey, and Cornelia Shea, uh, to the, um, yeah, what do we call this committee now? It's the, um, oh, the, uh, the zoning bylaw review committee.
No, glad we made the motion, just second now.
Well, you, you, you gotta, uh, make the motion, you can, yeah.
I will make the motion then.
Okay. I just need a second, okay.
Do I need to go through the list?
Uh, no.
Or can I just make a motion that agrees with what you?
Yes, yes.
Well, I will second it on the basis that, uh, you've checked to make sure that, uh, this is the town administrator, because I thought it was very clear-cut what committees he could, I thought it was outside the purview, I thought this fellow on the select board.
No, this is by the, uh, town administrator.
Okay.
Yeah. So second by Cornelia Shea.
And again, like Connie mentioned earlier, it would be nice to reach out to those two committees, the, um, boys that you are concerned about, hoping that they would, you know, give their input.
Yes, oh, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So that was unanimous, so that was, uh, Ellen Godillo, uh, Cornelia Shea, uh, Bruce Mackey, and Kevin Robinson.
Welcome.
All right, so, uh, thank you, uh, everybody for, uh, appearing tonight on, on short notice. Um, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, working with you all. All right, so next. Oh, yeah, oh, didn't, um, planning board member notes. Everybody on the planning board have anything they'd like to say? I mean, I, I was just very happy to see the, uh, the number of people that volunteered for this committee, and, um, and I just have to say again that I, I, I think it's gonna be well organized, and I think, uh, I think it's something to look forward to, I, it seems like Carver is in a transition period where, you know, there is, everything's developed in the north and everything's coming south, and I think Carver is, is one of the next towns that, you know, is, is gonna be, there's gonna, there's gonna be work here.
An exciting town to be in right now.
So, you know, this is a good time that we, we, uh, came up with this, uh, committee, uh, to work on this because, um, it, it's gonna determine the, the future of Carver. And, and, uh, you know, also to work with other plans that, uh, that we've, that we've had before. So, um, it's, uh, you know, it's pretty exciting, you know, you know, generally, during the planning board times that I've been here, projects come in, you don't have a lot of control over what, what happens, it, they just come in, uh, people own land and they propose something, and long as it goes by the regulations, um, it's usually, uh, accepted. Uh, but now we're kind of really getting down to the nitty-gritty of where we wanna put things and do things, and so it's, it's gonna be an interesting time. All right, planning director notes.
So, in your packets, I have a email, it's from Jeffrey Walker. Uh, this is the, uh, Serped Commission, um, meeting tomorrow night, uh, but they have some, uh, a couple of, uh, presentations, once, uh, it's on, then we talk about solar development. And so, uh, members are interested, um, all you have to do is, I think. Yeah, there's, there's, supposed to have a talk about, uh, webinar on solar development, so, uh, I'll probably be participating in that, just to, um, see what's what, but also wanted to bring it to the attention of some of our newer members who may not be familiar with solar development. Could be an opportunity to, uh, learn something, uh, about those kind of projects. And then, uh, the other item is that we're expecting our, uh, first marijuana facility application, coming up soon, uh, for retail, and, um, they haven't filed with us yet, uh, they are working on, uh, filing with the Conservation Commission, and so at some point they'll be coming before us. Would also cause us to change our, potentially change our venue, cause I anticipate that's gonna have a lot of, uh, people interested in the, in the project. Uh, right now, the only facility that could potentially hold a large crowd is the middle high school. And, um, at this time, the only time the public could use that facility is on a Wednesday, cause once they go back to, uh, kind of in-school learning, uh, Monday, Tuesday will be, you know, classes, and then Wednesday will be the break day when they clean the school, and then, uh, then they're back on Thursday, Friday. So the only day that we would have available would be a Wednesday. Um, so I've tried to reserve some dates, but I think they're still, they haven't responded yet, um, cause they're still trying to get their school schedule, um, all straightened out. Uh, so that's that, and then we probably also have a, a, a solar application, one or two solar project applications come before the board, um, in the near future.
All right, thank you, Jim. Um, we had the minutes of nine-eight-twenty-twenty, I don't have them with me, I don't know if anybody would mind if we just table that till our next meeting? Yeah, so why don't we just table those minutes until our next meeting? And, um, our next meeting date is, uh, ten-thirteen.
So, Mr. Chair, with me not being here, if I don't take my wife out for our thirtieth anniversary that night for dinner, I might not have one.
Oh, ten-thir, oh, on, uh, ten-thirteen, that's.
On thirteen, I'll be married thirty years.
Oh, wow.
Congrats. Congratulations.
I will, uh, maybe I'll have to just work some magic with her and tell her that I'll do something for a weekend. Instead of, uh, do half your day.
Well, we'll see, um, you can keep in touch with Jim or me, and when we come up with, uh, what's gonna come up at our next meeting, whether you, uh.
Well, having this last two days, I feel really bad, I thought it happened to fall right down that day.
Yeah. Well, we'll see what happens, see what's on our agenda for the next, uh, meeting. Um, all right, while we, while you were gone, um, we tabled the minutes of, uh, nine-eight-twenty-twenty until our next meeting, cause I didn't get a chance to look at them yet, so. Um, so our next meeting date is the, uh, ten-thirteen, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I wanna entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
The motion is second, so, uh, motion was made by, uh, Kevin, and seconded by Connie. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
And that was unanimous, uh, good night, everyone, and thank you.